Good evening, everyone. Commuting the regular meeting of the Sonoma Planning Commission. And we'll start with the roll call, please.
Commissioner Barbos.
Here.
Commissioner O'Gorman Jenkins.
Here.
Commissioner Nugent.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Here.
Commissioner Willers.
Here.
Commissioner Wirick.
Here.
Chair Barnett.
Here.
Thank you, and I would like to point out that Vice Chair Donbok is absent from tonight's meeting.
Okay, thank you. The next order of business would be the approval of the agenda. As we can see, we have a number of things on the agenda tonight, but I'd like to, by a show of hands, find out how many members of the audience are here for a specific item? Because we could change it. No, no, that's not the question. I know you're all here for something. The question is, how many of you are here for the general plan discussion? Okay, quite a few of you. And so I'm going to recommend to the commission that we change the order of the agenda, moving up the general plan discussion to the beginning of the meeting instead of the end. If I can get a motion for that?
I second that, that is a motion.
Okay, thank you. Do we need a roll call vote on the changing of the agenda?
No, we do not. I just want to clarify, in what position do you want that? Do you want it before general public comment or after consent?
After the consent calendar, please. Okay, then we'll go ahead and give you all an earlier evening and give you a chance to give us your opinions on the general plan before we all get exhausted. Okay, the next item is the pledge of allegiance. I saw Mr. Bohar raise his hand. Would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance to that? All right, at this point, the next item on the agenda is an opportunity for comments from the public. These are comments on items that are not on the agenda. And you will have an opportunity to comment on any of the agenda items as we bring them up. But this is a opportunity for someone who has something to say that is on a topic that is not on the agenda. Is there anyone in that category? Please come up and state your name, if you would, for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Michael Woods, 8:46 Broadway, nice to see you all. I wanted to introduce Tamsin Drew, who's a new partner, who's joined my practice. She started as of the first of November, and she has a background in land use and real estate. She was Chief of Staff to the General Counsel for Salesforce before she joined me. Before that, she was with the City and County of San Francisco for seven years. She was very involved in the Hunters Point project and candlestick projects. She was Director of Legislative Affairs, Deputy Director of Legislative Affairs for Mayor Ed Lee when he was the mayor. So she had a lot of real estate and land use expertise, and I just wanted to introduce her to you. You'll see her around from time to time. Jennifer, I know she's corresponded with you, but you all haven't met, so I just wanted to welcome her to my practice and to town and let you know that she's here. So, thank you very much, Tamsin.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for the introduction, Michael. And I just wanted to say how much I'm looking forward to working with each of you moving forward. And thank you for the welcome to town.
Thank you.
Really quick, could you spell your name for me, please?
Yes, it's an odd one. T.A.M.S.E.N. And then Drew, D.R.E.W. It's an easy one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the consent calendar, in which there's the receiving the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of November 21st. And Natalie, I believe, via had a couple of corrections to make.
Yes, so under the approval of the agenda, roll call vote, I missed Commissioner Wirick's name on that one and had Commissioner O'Gorman Jenkins. So fixed that because Commissioner O'Gorman Jenkins was not here at the last meeting.
Okay.
Commissioner Wirick was. And then the time that we have for the commissioner reports and comments, it said 8:23, and it was actually 6:23. So I just wanted to fix this.
Well, these certainly are important details.
Yes.
And accuracy matters.
Yes.
So, thank you very much. Is there a motion for the approval of the minutes, please?
So moved.
Can I hear it?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Nugent.
Aye.
Commissioner Barbos.
Well, Epstein, I wasn't here.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Neill.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Gorman Jenkins.
Epstein.
Thank you. Commissioner Willers.
Yes.
Commissioner Wirick.
Yes.
Chair Barnett.
Aye.
That was, I think, 5:02:00. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on to the adjusted agenda by talking about the general planned land use. This is item 5.2, and we're going to receive a presentation from our our Development Director and then have a discussion.
All right, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Jennifer Gates, Community Development Director. So this item was requested. We've had a couple of different comments that I've raised as director comments just about what happened at the City Council meeting. So this is me presenting some of the new stuff, as well as the old stuff, just to kind of go over and refresh everybody's memory. And then also end with what's the next steps in this process. So, first thing, again, I'm just going to highlight some of the recommendations. I'm not going back through the entire presentation that we did last time of where we started from and come through. So, right now, I'm just going to focus on, these are the things that we talked about and that City Council talked about moving forward. The first was in regards to the parks and open space protection and modifying our Mountain View Cemetery and changing that to a park instead of a public facility. And also, this area would include an overlooked trail near the Montini Preserve. And we would also modify our description of parks to allow for cemeteries as a use in there. So that we're making sure that we meet existing, we don't create some nonconformities and things like that. Because we are continuing to look at, not necessarily that portion of the cemetery, but the cemeteries in general of adding more space for individuals that may want it. A topic that came up at, started discussions at one of our Planning Commission meetings as a conversation and a presentation through public comment was some ideas around greenways. And I know that that topic has expanded and other terms that we're using as well are green lines, blue lines, blue infrastructure, green infrastructure, and topics around that. I presented at the time, the information that you see here on the screen that talks about what it says in our government code, you know, as it pertains to greenway specifically and that designation. This greenways is, can be included as a overlay within our land use map, as well as with a description. Also, staff is proposing to incorporate policy and action language to be proactive in expanding our network of trails along our creek corridors. I know that we all enjoy utilizing Friar Creek. And so how do we expand that into maybe potentially the southern portion of Nathanson Creek and portions of Sonoma Creek as well? Also, you know, can we do that within our maintaining our creek setbacks that we already have a creek overlay for? And integrating other trails and pedestrian facilities along our roadways? And making sure that we're making connections between all of our uses, such as schools and parks or libraries and hospitals, so that everybody can get around? Others, I just want to acknowledge, there's been a lot of work in developing goals and policies and implementation measures by members of our community to help further this concept and idea. And staff will work with our consultants to integrate these draft goals and policies and measures into our general plan as that is drafted over the next six months. We also talked about commercial development modifications. And we discussed here at Planning Commission and City Council provided further direction to go ahead and remove the mandatory residential requirement on just the commercial for the residential component. And retaining that residential requirement on our mixed-use zones. And so I wanted to clarify that. Also, we talked about additional modifications to our residential land use, including increasing our density ranges for some of our land use designations. Allowing for up to a fourplex in low-density residential and Sonoma residential with the intent that the development standards would be created, as well as development objective design guidelines would be developed to incentivize the ability to do in those fourplexes or triplexes look like single-family homes and fit within our existing community. And we have examples of that throughout our community that we can build upon. Also, to remove from the general plan itself, not from the zoning code, just the general plan, the height slot coverage and FARs and leave that in the development code itself to set those standards. This way, it allows some flexibility. If we do modify, we can modify the zoning code without having to reopen the general plan. Also, within regards to those densities that I just noted, these are the proposed increase in densities. So again, in the low-density residential and in Sonoma residential, we would be looking at allowing up to four units regardless of the density. I did not include hillside in this list because we're not proposing any changes to hillside, nor the rural residential. So if you're wondering why that was missing. With the others, the medium-density and high-density, to increase those, and then housing opportunity, commercial, gateway, commercial, and mixed-use. And just to clarify again, in the commercial and gateway commercial, we would remove that residential component. It would be optional, but we will still allow standalone residential to be developed in those zones, as well as in the mixed-use. We will still allow standalone residential, but we do have a commercial component that's currently required. So findings would still be to be made by Planning Commission with any development being proposed. That would be just residential.
Excuse me, Jennifer. Folks, the seats up front, there's no penalty for sitting in the front row. The teacher will not call on you. And everything will be fine. Okay.
Okay, and then another change that was considered and was moving, is moving forward per City Council meeting was to eliminate the wine production use that is currently identified in our Sebastiani property. And to modify this area to something with, to be determined, the name, but would be more of a mixed-use area. There's a combination of uses right now, including wine production. As you can see, there's a couple of ag, and then there's one mixed-use lot there in the corner. And then that would be combined into a combination of mixed-use. That would be wine production still and agriculture allowed, as well as other visitors serving commercial hotel and wine tasting rooms, as well as a mix of residential densities and housing types. And then there would be requirements for residential components. So it wouldn't, so again, we would treat it like mixed-use and have residential requirements, just like any other mixed-use area. It does isolate, as you can see, some yellow, but that used to be gray. That's our Sebastiani Historic Homes. And so we would be pulling those out and making sure that they stay as single-family lots. And we also talked about the First Congregational Church, the goal of which we have identified that it was a single, it's an RL zone, so a single-family, very low-density. At first, we had talked about, how do we get affordable housing on this site? And the potential to increase that density to a high-density residential allowance. We can also, per our discussion that we had, we talked about creating a housing, affordable housing overlay. And so that's what, in just further discussions, you know, moving forward, with the, since the goal is affordable housing, how do we reach that goal? And that overlay could be that incentive to get affordable housing on this lot.
Jennifer, could I ask you to
Sure.
just briefly describe the effect and function of an overlay?
Sure. So the affordable housing overlay allows the underlying density to remain. In this case, we would design it that way, so that the underlying density is allowed. But if somebody came in with a project that met the requirements of the overlay, then that overlay becomes its zoning. Does that make sense? So underlying is RL, and I have a slide on the affordable housing overlay in the sense of just in general concept. So let's say that we treated it like our housing opportunity zone, so we get up to 30 dwelling units per acre. We allow it as a permitted use. And so we would kind of layer that on top as an allowance. But they would have to meet a certain level of affordability. And what we're proposing is around 50% affordable to lower levels.
So the overlay zone is applicable and triggered when an applicant comes in with the numbers sufficient to trigger the effect of the overlay?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
The other reason why is SB4 is a state law that applies to church properties. And in this situation, it's not applicable because it is surrounded by the state park. If this was in another location, they could have used SB4 to allow a high-density residential affordable housing complex without going through zoning.
What are the boundaries of this parcel that we see here? Is everything in this picture on this?
No, so basically, the edge of the driveways to the trees. Like just behind those trees, there's like, they have a little playground back there. Can you see my cursor? No, okay.
No.
So you see the edge of the driveways that go around the property? And then there's the row or groupings of trees back there?
The way back, yeah.
Yeah, so think of that edge with the grass, that's their edge. So the nice rectangle that you see. So think of the grass as their edge. It's three acres.
Okay. Does this potential development as multifamily housing, contemplate the possible removal of any of the improvements that are now in the parcel?
So that is the, the church is looking at it as having a combination use and keeping their church on the site, too.
But the old Adobe School, for example?
So the school is not there anymore?
No, I'm talking about the building that it's in.
Oh, the historic, the historic church, yes. We had talked about that. And keeping that and moving it to the front, basically creating more space. So that church is also moved from another site on Broadway and was moved here in, I think, the 60s? And then cut.
Jennifer, if I may, what is directly to the right? What is that complex?
I want to say it's three units.
Is it Park Villas?
Park Villas is the condos.
If we're talking about the little parcel immediately to the right, those are single, single-family homes, used to be owned by Buddy Beal.
Okay. I think there's like three or three units in there.
Yes, thank you.
This is another site, so this is the 20215 Upper Road. We have Nathanson Creek going through it, which you can see by the dense foliage. And then we were looking at changing this to match its neighboring use on this one side, on the left side, from medium-density residential to commercial gateway. And this is the Freedman's Lumber Yard, if you remember that, as part of that conversation. And so looking at changing one or both of these to that commercial gateway. And so we're still working that out with that creek there and the setbacks and things have really limited the ability to develop that site.
And our creek setback requirement is how wide?
30, from top of bank.
Thank you. So it's basically from side to side would be 60 feet plus the width of the, of the waterway?
Correct. All right, and then this one is new. You guys haven't seen this one yet. When we were looking at the site that we're literally sitting on right now, it is a public facility. And we are looking at what the uses are and what could be allowed in public facility. One of the changes that we'll be making is pulling out hospitals and medical facilities as these are private institutions and not public. And currently, they're in our public zone, and so we're going to be bringing them over to the commercial. But in this, so we're removing them from the definition of public facility. And then we're going to add recreational facilities, that was not actually part of our public facility. And then add outdoor commercial recreation, which does incorporate facilities for outdoor participant sports and other types of recreation where a fee is charged for use, including in the amphitheaters and athletic club facilities. So still public, but been open to the public, but fees are charged. So that we had that definition already existing in our code, and so it's just kind of trying to meld what's actually happening and what can happen. Sure.
Historically, there was some events there. Jazz Plus is the event that I'm recalling, a music concert series. That's not, that type of use is not, as due to my quick reading of this, would be, would not be permitted. So there'd be no future possibility of having a musical event there?
We would, so it's still a public facility, and so we can have special events on our own properties and as, in public facilities. But we're also adding the ability to have an amphitheater or that type of use. So what we're proposing is to add outdoor commercial recreation, which does, with that definition, has a list of things, which does include amphitheater.
So, for example, Transcendence Theater Company was there last year. Would this allow them to do that in the future?
Yes, it would. And it has been approved for next year as well. And the next item that's new to you all is the Housing Element Implementation. I had received a letter. And I quickly went to our Housing Element and looked up this specific aspect. And so in our Housing Element, it said that we needed to do a zoning amendment. And by doing that, we would identify, they specifically called out three sites, which are on the next slide, that if they had, if they provide at least 20% lower income units and not include an application for a subdivision map, that they should be approved use by right. And it would not be subject to any city's discretionary approval, nor would it be subject to CEQA. This section was in specific response to that these sites have been in three cycles now. And so of our Housing Element, the fourth, fifth, and now the sixth. And so that was the HCD addition at the last minute of the Housing Element is where, is how I'm reading it. Just by the track changes. So they're required for the Housing Element to meet our lower-income housing. Some of these sites aren't just lower income, some of them are mixed income. And so how do we do that? And so I'm trying to work that out, whether it's in our housing opportunity zone that we attach this 20%. If I can just attach it to a literal parcel, that's, I'm a little iffy on that. So I'm going to look into it a little bit more, but these are the three sites. And this was what was presented, is to look at commercial to housing opportunity or something in which I can designate or attach that 20% rule to those sites. So one of them is the site next to Safeway. Another one is on West Knapp at 590. It's got a little Victorian in the front of the house. It looks like an old farm property, potentially. And then the last one is behind, across the street from Sonoma Market, not Marketplace. Which one is that? Broadway Market? Help me here. Sandwiches? Thank you. Broadway Market. Across from Broadway Market is the other one. And then the affordable housing overlay. So, again, affordable housing overlay allows the underlying zoning to remain. It's intended to incentivize affordable housing by establishing a minimum required number of affordable units in order to be able to use it. Allows for an increased density, a ministerial process, and no discretionary review, maybe other. And the intent of that is how do, trying to continue to get at, how do we incentivize affordable housing to meet our RENA numbers? What kind of development would that look like? And part of this, throughout our document right now, really relies on us working together to develop those objective design standards and those objective design guidelines to make sure that physically it is what we are wanting creatively. If we do not have objective standards and objective design guidelines, it's really hard to make sure that we are getting what we want as a product at the end of the day. So again, this would be applicable, we're looking at applying it to sites where the existing zone is consistent with its current use, such as the Staples Lot. The intent is not to make things nonconforming, but we want to allow for that development to occur. And would be a larger residential development than what would be already allowed. And again, only if the affordability units are provided. So those, that was the highlights. Those are all the things that we talked about and as far as the land use map itself goes. So our next steps are, we are going to have one more community meeting on January 30th at, yeah, 2025, at 6:00 PM at Vintage House. We're going to review those land use maps as a community meeting and receive comments. We're going to begin our environmental review, and we're going to begin drafting our general plan. The intent of, when we're drafting our general plan, my intent is to get elements in chunks instead of one big document so that it's digestible and we can review things. And so my intent is to post sections of the draft elements as we're getting them completed and releasing them for comments and review for periods of time. We're also going to review them with our general plan task force. And if there are certain decision points or things that we need feedback on, to come to Planning Commission and City Council for direction. The intent of the general plan task force is to be kind of the sounding board and an opportunity for additional public comment process. And so we do post those meetings and make them available for the public to attend. And they are held over in the EOC, or Emergency Operations Center. So it's a little more informal group. And it's not videotaped, so it is in person. And we do continue to promote the website and to sign up for up- And we do, um, continue to promote the website and to sign up for updates on that website so that people are alerted to all the meetings, including the task force meetings, um, any agenda postings, um, and other, um, opportunities for comments and review. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Jennifer. This time, uh, I would solicit questions from the commission. If you have any, we'll make comments later. One question, go ahead.
Um, Jennifer, on the first slide that you showed about the public facility that would go to park, um, I just wanted to get some clarification there. Yep, you just passed it. There you go. Which part of that parcel is city property versus county property?
So everything that's blue turning to green is city property.
Okay, and then the remaining blue that remains county?
Owned by the county. And then in the county boundaries but owned by the city is the green parcel to the left, Montini Preserve. So we haven't actually annexed yet, Montini Preserve, even though we own it. It's on my list.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, then I'm gonna open this up to the public. Let me get it by, once again, with a show of hands. How many people would like to make a comment about this agenda item? Three, four, five, six? Okay. When we have a large number of people wanting to make comment, we would tend to impose a time limit of two to three minutes, but with only six or seven people, or even if it were ten, I'm not going to turn the timer on. And I would just ask that you come up, make your comments concisely and, uh, and if you begin to run on too long, I'm gonna interrupt you and ask you to wrap up. So, if you want to speak, come on up to the lectern and, uh, say your piece and please give us your name before you start. Who'd like to be first? Please come up. Don't be shy.
Hello. My name's Elizabeth Sealy. I own Sealy Mission Vineyard, which is on Fourth Street East at the path. Across from the path is the Malbec Vineyard, which is Sebastiani. Next door to me is Casa Sebastiani. Across the street from me is the Sebastiani Winery. So my question is, if this zoning change occurs, could Foley, um, bulldoze the Malbec Vineyard and build a mixed-use structure?
Go ahead and, and talk about entitlements and the process at this point.
Sure. Um, so even though we're looking at changing the land use, it's not an entitlement to do any development. So with this mixed you, mixed commercial, right now, we're defining what that is as text, a body of a text. And then we'll need to develop what those standards look like. And in, uh, we all recognize the importance of our vineyards and incorporating the vineyards in any proposed development would still need to go to Planning Commission for review and approval, as well as any, um, site-specific environmental review for a project. So it doesn't say yes automatically, it could be as part of a proposal that's in the future that they modify those fields if they don't need them anymore in that ag space. So that's, um, a possibility, but it's not a yes right now.
So the answer is, it's possible.
It's possible.
So instead of having a vineyard there, we could have a bunch of concrete buildings and-
You could have buildings, yes.
That would be terrible. That would change the, it is part of the original vineyard of Sonoma, the Malbec Vineyard and mine, so that would be a disaster. Please don't allow that.
Keep in mind that, that the- Do me a favor, if you agree with the speaker, just raise your hand. Keep in mind that what Jennifer, Jennifer has said is that just because the zoning allowances change does not mean it's a right to do anything. In other words, there is still an approval process that has to take place. People can apply for all kinds of things in the city, but this body and ultimately the City Council has discretionary authority. And if, for example, in the opinion of this body, the historic nature of a vineyard was of such importance that it's getting bulldozed for the purposes of putting something else up, it, it's within the purview of this body to say, no, you can't do that. And so, uh, zoning changes merely speak to what could be possible, but not what is a given approval of anything. Okay, who'd like to come up next?
My name is Ni, Nicholas Dixon, uh, Sonoma resident for the last twenty-eight years. Uh, I'd like to follow up on the comment that the prior lady had, um, and I would actually request this committee to take a very careful look at zoning in that area. I personally would be very affected by it, so it's not just in my backyard, but for the last five years, working with Foley, we've had to deal with very excessive noise, large trucks, a large amount of traffic in that area, the streets are very narrow, the egress and entrance to those areas that you're talking about are very narrow. So I would encourage this committee to take a very tough look at that area as to really, whether we really wanna build housing, additional industrial use, and hotels on that area. And I understand you will certainly take it under consideration, but certainly it's not the ideal site. I would encourage you to look at it very tough. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi there, my name's Cedra Nathan. Good to see you all again. It's, almost feels like October fourteenth again. But, um, really what I wanna talk to you about is some of the things that we went through today, because the information was great to have updated, but what we really need is to know what the actionable parts are and what that means when rubber hits the road. That's really what a lot of people here are sort of wondering about. And so I'm gonna use the example that you just talked about, because we're, I'm part of a group of people, a network, that have been asking for green and blue infrastructure, for greenway overlays, and for a mapping, uh, exercise that takes a, an audit that's very specific so we understand what's happening. Not to put constraints, but to help us have a vision and, and a forward-thinking plan that's also got practical aspects to it, so people aren't taken by surprise. So you understand, of course, with business, that the thing that creates chaos and excess dollars to projects is when you have unknowns. That's the same thing with cities and general plans. You really must understand what your assets and what your infrastructure is. And so the same thing goes with our green and blue infrastructure. We need to have mapping that identifies not just where nature is on pri, on public properties, but where it is on private properties, because nature just doesn't care if it's on private or public at all. And so that's part of our audit, to understand what's where and who owns what. And that's part of an, a general, um, plan, open space code, that exists. So agriculture is a sub, um, definition category for open space. You're right, Larry. You could sit up here and say, no, we're not gonna have you do that. We don't wanna have this, this historic, um, vineyard be changed. They actually had that problem in Pomona where I went to university. But instead, you could also just have a master plan that lays out what are the key areas, the vision, the sort of aspirational ar, areas, and invite people to help come in and invest with you, develop public-private partnerships, like we see a lot of communities do today. And so we see that, um, greenway overlays, you talked about housing overlays, these are integrated ideas. And so that is part of what Jennifer mentioned today, but what we really need to know is the specifics of how that happens, what it looks like, what are the timeframes, um, and then how do, uh, the information that we give actually make it into the plan? Because a lot of people have been giving this content and feedback and coming in for months on end and having a sense of insecurity about, well, okay, so where has that information gone? Where is it? We're seeing some things move forward, but not to the extent that it feels like you guys should have this information update to really know some of the content that we're talking about. I don't know if that's clear enough for you, but I'm hoping it is.
Thank you, Cedra. Let me tell you that, uh, I've been discussing with our Development Director incorporating an agenda item at our next meeting, if, if the, uh, number of items allows it, to have a fuller discussion about the work that you and others in the community have been doing on the green and blue infrastructure, greenway plan approach. And, uh, just to have a fuller discussion, to get a sense of, of, for the commission of what the potential and, and opportunities that it would provide, and also explore with Jennifer, how and in what ways, um, the concepts will be, can be, and could be incorporated into the general plan. So we'll, we'll see if we can get that scheduled for the next meeting. Okay, who's next?
Hi. Thank you for your service, the Planning Commission. As a commissioner, another commissioner, I appreciate all the time that it takes.
Can you give your name for the record?
My name is Connie Schleline, and I am, uh, Chair of the Cultural and Fine Arts Commission, and also a co-chair of a organization called Creative Bridges, which is very dedicated to, uh, improving arts education for our school district, uh, students. Uh, an alliance of forty-five nonprofits through the, through the city. The Cultural and Fine Arts Commission, if you didn't know, is over four decades old. It's one of the most enduring commissions in the city. And in fact, one of the things we do is pick the treasure artist, and if you look around this room, Victor Farrar was our treasure artist this year, uh, for, uh, Quetzalán Ballet Folklorico. We change the exhibitions in here often. And we, um, we, last night, passed the public art policy. Twenty, twenty-year-old policy that was a little dusty and a little out of date, and the City Council passed it unanimously and embraced it. What does that have to do with you? Well, you know, there's a lot that our shared vision of, uh, a, a great place, Sonoma being a great place, has to do with planning. We envision, with a little tweaking, we can have an even more beautiful, environmentally friendly, and more artful community with bike-walk pathways filled with artful delights. Entryways that are more inviting, more, um, and, and are, make everyone more curious about what's in this beautiful, wonderful city we already have. Distributing public art in diverse locations is something people don't really think about. They think about the plaza, right? But the, the entries, the bike pathways, all those green spaces, very important for public spaces. And they make them more dynamic and flexible. To incorporate public art along trails and pathways within the green overlay is important for us. We've been working with other commissions and there's this, um, stars aligning right now that are, is really exciting within the city. The number of us from a number of commissions can see the picture. And planning should be included in that picture, because we are concerned with the beautification and also the transportation. So we are planting seeds right now, especially a person of my age, um, a tree we may never sit under. And it's important that we look at those seeds and make sure they're the right seeds. And I encourage you to have a vision of how we can beautify the city to be even more beautiful than we have. So thank you for, for all you're doing.
Thank you, Connie.
Hi, good evening, commissioners and community members. My name is AJ Lemire, and I'd like to begin by thanking all of you for your time, dedication, and efforts in navigating the complexities of Sonoma's general plan process. I see the challenges you face in balancing diverse priorities, and I appreciate the work you've done to keep these important discussions moving forward. That said, I'm here tonight because we, as a community, believe that now is the time to take tangible steps toward a more comprehensive, actionable plan that addresses Sonoma's most pressing needs. This general plan should unify critical issues like housing, infrastructure, public spaces, creating a clear path towards resilient and connected, uh, towards a resilient and connected future. And these are not isolated topics. They work, uh, interconnectedly and exist, uh, side by side. And these are solutions that residents of this community rely on. And so over the past several months, countless community members, organizations, and experts have contributed their time and expertise to this process. It is important that their voices are fully reflected in these updates we see. Reusing materials or revisiting old presentation diminishes the immense effort that's been put into this old work. A plan that reflects progress rather than just a discussion, it's not just a goal, it's a necessity for Sonoma to meet the needs of today and tomorrow. I understand the difficulty in aligning competing priorities and the pressure to make the best decisions for our city. And that's why I believe we can move forward together by embracing the vision and community, uh, the, the vision the community has outlined. One that ensures safer streets, accessible housing, and infrastructure that connects and benefits everyone. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak tonight. I look forward to seeing a general plan that honors and contributes, uh, of this community and positions Sonoma for a stronger, more inclusive future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Good evening. I, I'm Dr. Alan Nathan, and I'd like to talk about process, if I may.
Alan, can you move the microphone a little closer to you?
I sure can. So I'm gonna turn my back to you, but not to be rude, but to ask a question. Audience, how many of you with a drink in your hand could explain the planning principle of this general plan to anyone? Not a soul.
Okay, you now have to repeat the question you asked, so we can hear it.
Okay. How many of them can explain the planning process with a drink in their hand? How many of them at a cocktail party or when they meet someone on the street could say, oh yeah, I understand what the, what the planning process is for the city of Sonoma? They don't know. And it's not lack of interest, so it must be lack of information. If you guys could work to make the process clean and clear and consistent, so that anybody here could explain it to anybody else, and that this process be consistent, not only in planning, but in your other subgroups, as well as City Council, I think you would remove a lot of, like, confusion and hesitancy on the part of your citizenry. So something for you to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. On that note, let me, let me say that, uh, for those of you who have not gone to the city's general plan update website, um, it's a good place to start. While it's not, um, while it's not the most entertaining document, and, and a lot of planning issues are highly technical, they have to conform with state law and, uh, the language of state law and the regulatory structure in which we must operate. That notwithstanding, uh, if you go to the website, you will see that, what it is that the general plan includes, how it is generally structured, what the process is that's being undertaken to update it, what the legal requirements are that are associated with it, and it gives you a very good, basic overview of this planning process. Now, admittedly- That notwithstanding, it's a very good place to start, and you can drill down and using the Internet, if you have questions about, for example, a reference in the general plan to a specific state housing law, you can query it on Google and find out as deeply as you want to go what the implications of those rules are. I will just mention one bit more, that never before in my 35 years of being involved with city planning and policy and being on the City Council and the other things I've done, never in my experience has the state intruded as strongly as it has in the local decisions of local jurisdictions like ours. Much of the discretionary authority that we used to enjoy has been removed, and I find it regrettable and frustrating. For example, in approving projects or project applications, you heard Jennifer earlier talk about objective standards. This isn't just something that we wanted to do, this is something the state has imposed upon all jurisdictions. Terms like, and approval criteria that we used to be perfectly normal for Sonoma, ideas like neighborhood compatibility and character, those are no longer legitimate criteria for the approval or denial of a project. These are considered subjective, and the state has said they no longer can be used as a justification for saying yes or saying no, saying no. Essentially, aesthetic considerations by and large have been taken off the table as a viable and legitimate matter of consideration, the approval of projects. Objectivity by the state has been defined as quantifiable and written. What that means is numbers and specific language. So many square feet, so many feet tall, so much lot coverage, so many feet of setback, but out of scale, not compatible with the historical character of our neighborhood, those are out. That's not a decision we made in Sonoma. This is something that the state has imposed upon us and all the other jurisdictions. So it's a very different world we live in today than we lived in 20 or 30 years ago in terms of local authority. Next, please come up.
Mr. Chair, if I may real quick, I'll also add that we have a very talented and capable planning staff that operates under a very talented and capable planning director, who I know to always be very receptive and responsive to inquiries, especially as it relates to processes. Their phone numbers and their email addresses are listed on the city website prominently. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, I believe she has a comment that she wants to make.
Yes, and let me say that Jennifer also speaks English, which she does not speak bureaucraties. She speaks it, but she also, she's bilingual.
I am bilingual. That's my charm, right? So I did want to, because I see a lot of new faces. So we, and maybe you didn't get it, but I sent out a postcard over a year ago to every single address in this city, as well as every property owner, and in it said, we're beginning this general plan process. And so we had our first two public meetings in November of 2023. So those meetings and all the information that was collected and presented is available on our website. I do want to let you know, if you want to look back at those, there's also videos, because we did record them, Bob did, with KSVY, so they're all recorded and available if you want to watch those. I also want to point out on the webpage that Larry was talking about, we, on the left-hand side, you kind of see all the different meetings that we've had, and you can bring those up. But I also want to show you this right here, this draft existing conditions report. Some people have provided comments around it. Diane and Jacob here sitting to my right are associate planners that are new, and they're reviewing all the comments that were provided, and we're looking through those now and looking to make sure that there's certain things that people have asked for additional information, including Planning Commission and Council, so we're working through those. And then we also had the outreach report. So we summarized all the different activities that we've done, that we did from November all the way through the end of January. I think I did almost 15 presentations on this, and so we did collect a lot of information at that point, but we're still in this. We're still going through the process of gathering input and things like that. It is a long process, and I do want to stress, I want you to participate. I want you to come to the meeting on January 30th and provide your feedback and comments, and we are doing our best to incorporate them as we actually write the document out. If you saw our old document, it's, I think, 80 pages. This one will be longer. As Carol can note, she had one element, or not elements, or one actual action item that was to actually complete what they just finished last night and got approved. Now, it's the only reference to arts in the entire document. I looked, and I presented to them. We will be going to every commission as well, so I just hope that you guys continue through the process, and I'll look at some of the past work too as we move forward, in that if you have questions, some of you have reached out to me directly, and I am responsive as best I can, as fast as I can, so please do so, and I'm more than happy to answer your questions. So with that.
Thank you, Jennifer. Yes, sir.
I'm not sure I can be in. Ken Stokes, I live on Brazil Street. I have the northeast corner of the city and a county lot adjacent with a guest home and a home on Brazil Street. I'm a little late to the party, and for that I apologize, but I did want to add my thanks to those that have preceded me for the work that you do. Having served on commissions and school boards, I know that these nights are always long and sometimes painful, rarely joyful, and I admire the effort you put into it. I want to go back to the spirit of the way things used to be, building on Mr. Barnett's comment, and my comments are really more about the spirit, and I'm talking about the winery, Sebastianni Winery rezoning in particular, as opposed to the legalese and the impositions by the state in more recent days. You talked about zoning is about what could be, and in my opinion, and I won't pretend to speak for my neighbors, but I know a number of us who are here tonight are concerned about what's going to happen in our neighborhood, our little slice of heaven near the winery in Sonoma. It seems to me that you're looking at going from one of the most restrictive zonings, which was winery production, which I realize had some limits and was unique to that site, to one of the broadest catch-all zonings possible, which you haven't even determined a name for yet, and I admit I'm not sure whether all the definitions of that zone are possible, but it seems like everything has been thrown in there, including one of the highest density possibilities in the whole zoning code or in the whole planning code. So it's gone from something very specific for a specific site to something very broad and yet to be defined, and I apologize if there is more definition to it than I realize exists, but that's my impression from having reviewed the website and looked at the videos of the old meetings. Seems like there's a lot still to be determined. My biggest concern with that is a lot of those uses, and I apologize again, I'm going back to the way things used to be, would be inconsistent with the neighborhood. It is not a high-density neighborhood, it is a low-density neighborhood. Sebastianni was kind of the, I wouldn't say sore thumb, but it sticks out like a sore thumb, as being unique within the neighborhood, but it's been a relatively quiet and good neighbor over time. What we could end up with in the possibilities of could be in what I consider to be a catch-all zoning has me greatly concerned. Since it is site-specific that you're talking about, I would request of you to be as specific as you can be in placing appropriately quantified limits on this piece of property to make sure that six months or six years from now, we're not all here with even more neighbors complaining about, oh, my God, the worst possibilities of all this catch-all zoning have now appeared in our neighborhood or suggested for our neighborhood. So if we're talking about one site, admittedly a large site, let's be specific. It is a specific site, it will impact no one else in the community, it will impact the neighbors, and I think we deserve fair consideration with regard to what the possibilities could be. So again, I thank you for your service, and that's my statement.
Okay, who would like to come up next?
You're doing fine. I'm actually going to read something, but good evening. My name's Krista Holden. I live on Wilking Way, and yes, this is all very shocking to us to hear and see what is being proposed for our neighbor, really. So one of my neighbors kind of put this together that, on the plan, that there's a new and unique zoning designation for the Sebastianni site, recommend replacing wine production with Sonoma mixed commercial use, name to be determined as we are hearing, and it feels very general and very open and kind of frankly very scary. We would like to have, I can probably speak for many of us here, a more specific definition of what this new zoning would be designated as, what it would allow, what would be considered, what type of commercial existence or businesses would be allowed to come onto that property. And also, we kind of have a park in that winery site. It's used as one, people walk there, they bring their dogs, they have picnics, and it's actually shown on the map as a park. And to kind of maintain with the general plans on page six with your maintaining parks in Hillside, that's an area in which I know our neighborhood is very concerned about losing, and looking at that whole site and how that would really change our entire feel of an extension of a bike path for the tranquility of that area. So just things that we would like to have looked at and considered before a whole massive rezoning happens on that property. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Let me suggest, by the way, that for those of you who really want to dig into this subject and have concerns about the uses, as the process moves forward, don't wait for the city and the city bodies such as us to come up with the list of quote-unquote acceptable uses. Come up with your list of acceptable uses. Provide your government with something to respond to. Don't just respond to the government. I mean, this is your home, your community, there but for the grace of someone. You could be up here making the decisions. I mean, we're just citizens of the community, just like you, who volunteered to take on this task, but that doesn't mean that you as citizens don't have a voice, can't express it, and I'm encouraging you to put together a small group, for example, if there's a group of people who are specifically interested in the Sebastianni property, sit down and talk about what you want there, and then submit something to this body or to Jennifer in written form, suggestions about what you feel should be considered and would be, in your thinking, appropriate for that property. Don't wait for the City Council or the Planning Commission or the planning staff to give you those answers. This is your chance, so take it. Okay, yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Erin McTaggart. First off, I want to say thank you. Second off, second thing, is my mom regrets not being able to be here. She lives at 402 Fourth Street East and is a direct property line with the winery. She would be concerned about the increase in traffic at an intersection where people already blatantly run the stop signs with no law enforcement around. If there were to be a project that would have, we'd assume increased traffic. Secondly, noise would be a concern with any type of rezoning. Those are her two points. Mine follow hers pretty much exactly, and having been a renter at 402A, Fourth Street East, which is at the property line with the winery, they used to have some events in the barrel room, and they went on, they were loud, they went on at all hours, they were like wedding receptions. I'm assuming that if the rezoning happens and if some sort of hotel is built, they probably will have some sort of hall and events, and I request that, you know, the measurable things like noise and traffic and maybe increased police calls for complaints be looked at, quantified, at the impact of something like that could have happened on Fourth Street East. So, thank you.
And how is Pat?
She's all right. She's probably glad to be at home and not here.
Well, tell her hello for me.
I will, thank you.
Hello. Hi, I'm Jonathan Clark, resident on Fourth Street East near Sebastianni, sort of between there and Brazil. And one area I wanted to just make sure everybody was aware of is the California Density Bonus Law, something that I've spent a lot of time learning about in San Francisco. Essentially, it takes all power away from the local planning department and the city for approving residential projects if they provide a certain number of affordable housing units. It removes the ability to apply objective and subjective standards and allows for a 50% density increase over what you've already stated, the, what is it, 30 units per acre? So if this lot, I think, we're talking about the Sebastianni lot, if I took my measurements, is it roughly 50 acres or how big is it, do you know? 20, okay. So you multiply 20 times 50, you've got the potential for quite a few units on there, and the planning department and the city don't have any power to say no to that, essentially. So switching it from agricultural to mixed-use residential opens the floodgates for developers to take advantage of that law. Now it is protected, so the city has the authority to say no to projects, and so I just want to make sure the city is aware of that sort of loophole and what they're opening it up to if they do rezone it. I've come across this in San Francisco, the planning department in San Francisco was caught a little bit flat-fliated, you know, even the architectural approval board didn't have any authority to make modifications to projects that were put through. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Density bonus law is just one of a number of areas in which local authority has been usurped. There are unfortunately a number of others, just as severe.
Hello, Commission. Thanks for letting me speak. My name is Joe Cuneo. I live on Level Valley Road. Again, I'd like to speak about the Sebastianni property and specifically about the difference between wine production zoning and ag, agricultural zoning. We keep saying this is a site, it's one site, it's one property. It's actually not. We're talking about 22 acres and somewhere around 20 different parcels, okay? And in those 22 acres, there's about 16 acres of wine production. There's also six acres of agriculture, okay? Two parcels, six acres. I think we can all agree, wine production, it's obsolete. If it came back to where it was in the heyday, there'd be thousands of trucks driving around our neighborhood late at night. It's not quiet. You think it's, you know, wine production be romantic. It's a lot of noise, and that's not the ideal place for it, probably not coming back. And this is an opportunity to do something with that 16 acres of wine production. We're all a little nervous because we're creating a zoning. I don't really know when the last time that happened. We hope it's a collaborative If it came back to where it was in the heyday, there'd be thousands of trucks driving around our neighborhood, late at night. It's not quiet. You think it's, you know, wine production be romantic. It's a lot of noise and that's not the ideal place for it, probably not coming back. And this is an opportunity to do something with that 16 acres of wine production. We're all a little nervous because we're creating a zoning. I don't really know when the last time that happened. We hope it's a collaborative, transparent process and we can come to some agreement that everyone can live with. But it is a large parcel, 16 acres, okay? So for a little reference, MacArthur Place is five acres. The Altamira complex across the street from Train Town is two acres. 16 acres is a lot. I don't know why we have to rezone this six acres of agriculture as well. Maybe that's a state mandated thing, but it seems like this vineyard, we're talking about rezoning the historic Mission Vineyard, which actually the state has made it a historical landmark, so it's kind of ironic. It's a historic landmark, number 739 specifically. And there is a little plaque that says it's the first vineyard in Northern California. It doesn't seem like this, you know, 16 acres, rezone, let's talk about that. That's a big conversation. That's a lot going on to develop a new zoning. But why are we encompassing six, six and a half acres of historic agricultural land into this? It seems like that's not an issue. It seems like that's something that Sonoma, whether you're new here or you've been here for a long time or you're a tourist, it's a special, special thing to have our agriculture. So it's a big task. Good luck to you. I did, you know, I think that allowing things to be agriculture, it does, like you just said, the discretionary authority gets removed from you if it gets zoned certain ways. Like, I think it's in our best interest to keep this classic open space, Mission Vineyard, the patch, all these things. It's what makes us unique. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Somehow we've ended up with far more than seven people speaking. I think, I think your passion is driving you to the podium here.
As things develop, I guess. Good evening, Chairman, Members of the Commission, Michael Woods again, 846 Broadway. A couple of comments. One, I'd be interested in understanding the rationale for the elimination of the residential requirement on commercial parcels of two acres or more, but not on mixed-use parcels of three acres or more. Half acre more, thank you. Half acre more. Doing that for commercial but not for mixed-use, I'm just curious at some point of hearing that articulated. It's probably on the website and I haven't seen it, but I'm interested in why we would do that for commercial parcels but not on mixed-use parcels. What would be the policy rationale, the distinction that would explain that difference? Second thing is, I have had clients express concerns to me regarding the same issue Joe brought up, the potential for rezoning the agricultural parcels that are within the Sebastiani property to mixed-commercial. I don't have, I'm not here to state a position on anybody's behalf at this point, but just to let you know that I'm definitely hearing that concern that's been expressed by others here this evening. I don't know if agriculture was listed as an allowed use under the general plan designation for mixed-commercial, would agricultural zoning be considered consistent with that designation? Because as we all know, zoning has to follow the general plan, not the other way around. So conceivably, you could change the general plan land use designation to mixed-commercial, but leave the zoning as agricultural. If that was allowed and would be considered a consistent use, then maybe that would address some of the concerns. Leave those parcels ag that are currently ag, even if you're changing the general plan land use designation, as long as that ag zoning designation will be considered consistent with the general plan. So that's one idea. But if that doesn't work, in order to preserve those ag parcels as ag, then some more, some more work should be considered, I think, for, for, for what you're doing there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Art Grandi, 131 Fourth Street East. I'm at the corner of Fourth Street East in Brazil, so not directly facing the property, the Sebastiani property, which we're discussing, but certainly as part of the neighborhood that I've grown to know and love in my 10 years here. And I had two or three questions, just to raise, not trying to look for answers right now. One is, I had, actually, a similar thought just occurred to me a while ago, thinking about this, meaning a week or two ago, that why do we have to rezone this whole large area into one designation? And coming just to what the two previous speakers said, I don't need to repeat their points, but it strikes me that we're opening up a big Pandora's Box if we put a general multi-use designation over this whole area. And keeping it divided into smaller parcels, I think, makes a lot of sense. The second thought was, to the degree that we have this legacy production facility, wine production, which is probably going to have to be removed at some point, we should look in the neighborhood to the surrounding uses. And if you look at the map, all of the boundaries of this property that aren't in agriculture are residential. So why are we even considering multi-use, commercial, when we, what we're dealing with is a legacy unit existing, which has to be accommodated, but any property that is being converted from that ought to be converted to residential, because that's what all the surrounding neighborhood is, all the boundaries of the property. So I'm not sure why we are introducing commercial use into the center of a residential neighborhood. You look on the map around this area, blocks in all directions, if it's not open hillside or vineyards, it's residential. So we should reduce the possibility of commercial use in this area as those commercial properties are surrendered, rendered useless and put in residential. Thank you.
Thank you. How many more would like to say something? We've got one. Come on up.
Hi, my name's Lisa Martins, and I want to thank all of you again for your time. Some of you I recognize from other boards and other commitments to our town and our city, and I really appreciate it. I echo a lot of the concerns that have already been brought up, but what I'm really concerned about is the bridge at Fourth Street East and that very narrow street, Fourth Street East, between Fourth and Napa Street. My mom lived on Fourth Street East during the 2017 fires, and you couldn't have cars parked on both sides of those roads and get some of those fire trucks through safely. It was a really scary time. And so I think about, that's going to be the path, not only for what happens at Sebastiani, but if you put 90 or more units where the church currently sits, I think, what do they say, two and a half, three and a half vehicles per residence? And how, you guys know all those logistics better than I do, but I don't see anybody saying, let's destroy that historic bridge, widening that road, because you've got, you know, that's also part of Sonoma. So that's something we really need to think about when you're talking about rezoning, because when big companies come in and try and develop, that's what they'll look at. And that's, that's one of my main concerns, along with everything else that's already been mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, come on up. Thank you for letting me talk. My name is Charles Zipkin. I live on San Lorenzo Court. Sebastiani is in fact, my backyard, right across from the creek.
And can you repeat your last name slowly for me?
Z-I-P-K-I-N, Charles Zipkin. And my, I have a paranoid question. I'll admit it's paranoid, but I'm going to ask it because of everything that's been said here tonight. I wonder if anyone from Foley has requested this change in designation? Because I don't see any other reason for you designating private property, which is pri, all the other stuff is publicly owned land. This is private property. Why the multiple use designation does, is Foley interested in building a hotel? I realize that's a paranoid approach to this issue, but I have to ask the question because it's, it concerns me. So has Foley approached anyone, anyone from the organization, and asked for multi-use so they could build a hotel? Thank you.
I think I can briefly answer your question. Jennifer, did you?
I'll do it.
Go ahead.
So when we started this process, individuals and organizations have come forward and said, I'm interested. So all the parcels that you saw where we're specifically looking at, so the church property, the Napa Road property, this property, all have letters that are on our public comment website. And they were, and that is what the impetus for looking at these when we brought them to planning commission. So they do have letters of interest in looking at opportunities to modify their land use right now. This one specifically is not Foley themselves, but, or Foley Group themselves, but of an interested group in working with Foley on that potential. So those letters, again, are on our website. I want to say that was a, was that our September meeting? Sorry, I'll remember what date, but they are available as well.
My understanding is that the property might be available for sale, that there's not a proposal by Mr. Foley for development that, given the transition of their wine operations and, and their transfer of most of, if not all of, that wine operation to a different city, that the interest in retaining the property has lessened.
Can I follow up just a moment, just quickly? That does seem like a concession to building a hotel there. I mean, people asked you to make it multi-use and the suggestion is that's what's being put forward. And I understand it's not final, but that's what's being put forward. Somebody asked for this, so my guess is somebody's going to do it. I mean, earlier you said, just because it's multi-use doesn't mean they're going to build a hotel. But somebody specifically asked for multi-use, specifically the developers who are working maybe to purchase the Foley property. So that's, that's our concern. I understand the issues the state has imposed on you in regards housing. I don't think anyone here, I'm speaking for everyone, and that's wrong, but speaking for myself, I don't think anyone here really is opposed to housing. We understand its importance, although I think housing in this area is going to be for Silicon Valley second homeowners and retirees. I don't think it's going to be for the working people in this community. But I understand the need for housing and I understand the obligations you have and the difficulty. But a hotel is a whole different kettle of fish. And it sounds like it was asked for, and it sounds like you're moving in that direction. And that's where you're going to get opposition.
One of the, one of the parties, one of the parties attendant to a letter sent to the city is a hotel developer. So, you're not paranoid. Okay. Well, there's even someone behind you, so let's go.
My name's Sean Beatty. I actually happen to live on Mission Vineyard.
And what was that last name?
Sean Beatty, and I live at Fourth Street East at Level Valley.
B-E-A-T-T-Y?
T-T-I-E, it's a Scottish spelling.
Okay.
All right.
Get that, Natalie?
I want to, I want to emphasize how important that vineyard is to this town. And it is up for its 200th anniversary. And Joe Cuneo brought up the fact that it's registered with the state of California, there's plaques there, but I want to celebrate that. And it would be horrible to see the fact that the vineyard is actually broken into two blocks, because there was an easement for the bike path, which opened it up for the use by the city and anyone that visits Sonoma. So everybody that walks on that bike path, they're walking actually on half the property that I work for, and the other half is the Mallback Block, which is actually now called Cherry Block East, uh, West. They changed that recently, but that's not correct. But I just hope that that is taken into consideration with this multi-use thing. They need to understand that ag in this town should be considered, not only historic, but, but the jewel and the crown of what this town represents to a lot of people that visit here from across the planet. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Jim Bohr. I live at 299 First Street West, just down the street about a block. I wonder if, I heard the comments about the public being interested and informed about the planning process. I had the great pleasure and honor to serve on this commission for five years, and I go to cocktail parties. And I've been approached by many, many people wanting to know what's going on with the hotel project. I haven't heard anything about it in a couple of years. So I discussed the plan or the issue that they wanted to know about. It was clear usually that they had not been to a meeting about the project. And most of the public is interested, but interest is not enough. You've got to spend some time going to the meetings, watching the meetings on Zoom. A really great service that's been available in the last couple of years was Steve Page's email that goes out to the public, and it lists all the meetings that are going on. Sometimes it highlights the agendas. And I'm preaching to the choir here, I know that, but I'm supposed to be looking here, not there. If people are interested, they ought to get on Steve Page's list to start with. But it's one thing to be interested, but you've got to take the effort to be educated. That is a citizen's obligation to do himself. You can't expect this body to educate people on everything. You come here and get educated. That's how it happens. And I'll close by thinking about something from the revolution. Eternal vigilance is the cost of freedom, and that's what the citizens have to be, is vigilant and looking out for these things. The gentleman in the blue jacket made the point really important. How did this thing get started? Let's look into that. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. All right, well, we've done very well, about an hour of public comment. Is there anyone else before we close the public comment? Okay, then. We'll close the public comment and move to some discussion and comment. Well, maybe nobody has anything to say.
Okay, I'm going to start. I so appreciate you guys being out here. It's vital that we get your input. And to the gentleman who said, people don't understand the planning process, well, that's on you. I'm here because I got involved. And that's our job as citizens of this community, to get involved, to come to these meetings, to make sure that we are vigilant about what's going on. So if you don't understand the planning process, any one of us will help you. Jennifer will help you, the staff will help you. It's your job to get involved and to learn, and I'm so glad to see so many of you out here today. Most of you I recognize. A lot of the comments you guys made were really fabulous. Joe Cuneo, your comments about the 16 acres and the six acres is spot on. I really appreciate that. The comments about the historic Mission Vineyard, that's so critical. And I think the agricultural and the vineyard historic aspect of Sonoma cannot be destroyed. Highest and best use of this property. If a developer came in today and said they wanted to put in a wine production facility, we'd all be aghast, like, no way. Those trucks coming through all night, several of the Sebastiani kids, they're not kids anymore, have told me how hard it was for them when their parents sent them from door to door to say, harvest is coming, the trucks are going to be coming through. Nobody wants to see that again. It's time for highest and best use to shift to something better. And what that is, I don't think we've determined yet. Yes, there is a hotel developer that wants this property. We've got to be vigilant. I'd say, I'd like to use as an example the First Street East project, where the neighbors were appalled when a developer wanted to put in a hotel and housing across from the Littleley Fields at the old Peterson property. And it was fought by a lot of the citizens. And then, an amazing thing happened. A couple of the neighbors got together and purchased that property. And they came up with architects, and they came up with a plan, and they put together a proposal for that property that everyone loves. And that property will now be developed as 31 condo units. So as Chairman Barnett said, give a proposal, don't wait for the developer to come and shove it down your throat. So if you've got something you're interested in, you need to make it happen. And you guys have the ability and you've got the resources and you've got the network to actually pull together and make something happen. And I think you need to do it sooner, not later. I think that Level Valley Road area, as a runner, I'm on that road all the time, and I think it is the bike path. And I think that whatever is done there, we have to have the green path, bike path foremost. And I think that whatever is done there, we have to have the green path, bike path foremost in our mind on the development there. Exactly how that gets done, I don't know. But that is the bike path, and I think we really have to make sure that we keep that front and center. The bike path doesn't end at Fourth Street. It goes all the way down Level Valley to Seventh Street, and then wherever people go from there. So I think that that's really important. Um I do, somebody mentioned this being scary, and I think it's true, that it is scary when you don't know what's going on. But I also think that you have the ability to take that control yourself. And and really, I'm so impressed with the people in this room. Your thought your thought process here is spot on. And don't wait, like I said, don't wait for somebody to come and have a fully formed proposal that has so much momentum behind it that it's really hard to fight. So I'd say get in and fight it right now. Know that that sixteen acres of wine production is outdated. It is not highest and best use, and nobody really wants that again. So look for something that will serve the community better there. Maybe it'll be a portion of a hotel, maybe a boutique hotel, maybe just housing, maybe mixed use, maybe a brew pub. You know, maybe something completely different. And I would really put it on our community, not just you guys, but our community to figure out what is gonna fit there. I do think we have to recognize that that zoning does have to change to allow things to happen. And the best way to make that happen is through the general plan process, not doing an amendment to the general plan later. So um I've spoken enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Who'd like to go next? Mr. Willers, you said you had something? Go ahead.
Um I thank you for coming. Thank you for expressing your concerns about this one or group of parcels, this twenty acres of land. What Sheila said is is absolutely correct. Now is the time for you to shape what that parcel will become in the future. It's not just us that you need to talk to. The city council members will essentially be the people that will make the final decision. And and if you want that shaped in a way that you feel will be more compatible and a use more compatible with your um with your neighborhood and with you, now is the time to express that to them because the developer is expressing it to them of what they think is the most best use for that property for them, for the developer. So instead of standing here and and complaining about it, do the same thing that the developer is doing. Form a group, come up with a vision, lobby your city council members, and express your desire for the change of of use of that property if you have a better idea for it. My I have the same basic concerns of this, what I would call a spot zoning of that property um in terms of its intensity. It hasn't been fleshed out. We are in the general plan process. But you know, there are a lot of issues that you have all raised tonight that are related to that idea that need to be brought forward. My actually, in my mind, this is an area of our community and a change in use that is that should be what is called a specific plan. In other words, the planning of the property and its use is done on a granular level rather than a general plan level. And that the development does not happen until that specific plan is brought into that the that the underlying zoning remains as is until that specific plan is brought in brought to fruition. And in terms of the planning process, I can't explain the planning process at a cocktail party, holding a cocktail in my hand. I've done this professionally for thirty-plus years. I've been on the commission for more than I want to express, eight years at one time and now another four. It's complicated. It's it's complicated, and it takes time, and every issue has its own thousand issues related to it. The general plan is general, and yet it forms all of the specific decisions we'll make in the future. And we can't get into all of the specific decisions at the general plan level because we'll never get it done. And we have to get it done because we have to meet state mandated timelines. So be involved. We're gonna be involved, but this process is moving, and it has to be completed at a at a time specific. So help us. Thanks.
I'll chime in. First of all, thank you all so much for coming out tonight. That this deliberative process is so much more enjoyable for me and for us, I think, when we see turnout like this, and there's actually a fruitful, meaningful discussion. Know that you're heard and you're seen, and just because we are sitting here and you're sitting there doesn't mean that those concerns aren't shared. And I I don't think I could say it any better than my my colleagues have already stated. Stay involved. Just because there's a proposal on the table doesn't mean that there can't be another one. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Ms. Barbos?
I'll say thank you as well. Uh this has been a vibrant and spirited group tonight, and it's it's good to see. And here, a lot of times we have these meetings, there'll be one person sitting here. So this is great. And I think I want to thank Joe Cunio for really highlighting and helping focus the discussion about this this parcel that's getting a lot of attention. I think we hear loud and clear that the vineyards should not be developable for something else. So I don't really think you need to worry about that, but you need to keep making that point and make sure that whatever gets passed reflects that. But that this is a big opportunity. There's all of that sixteen acres with the wine production. You we all know what this town needs. It's housing. It's housing for people that can afford to live here but work here, not the second homes that was referenced, not the luxury housing, not the estate parcels. We need housing for our teachers, housing for the folks that that form the backbone of this community. This is a great opportunity to provide that. That's what I see. I'm pretty excited about this sixteen acres and what it could be. And there's a couple of little areas where you could walk straight out onto Napa uh Street or, excuse me, Spain Street. It could be wonderful. Just imagine that. But take that thought and following what my colleagues have already suggested and 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 start thinking about your own vision for what this could be that works for you, works for the community, and bring those to meetings. And and do organize yourselves and make your views known. But in in response to the gentleman at the back about why anybody doesn't know what's going on in this process, I have to just repeat what's been said. That's it's up to you to educate yourself. That's not a fault of this. Our community development director has and will continue to just seek input and comment wherever she can from the members of this community. She's had innumerable meetings where people are free to come. I encourage you, there's still, there's another one coming up in January. You heard that, January twenty-fifth. Come to the vintage house. Before then, put your thinking cap on and um think about what you'd like to see for that wine production area, the sixteen acres. And um we also get that you're not too keen on the idea of a hotel. But um that's for another day. But focus on what we need, what you think should be done, and uh what you can do as involved citizens to help make that happen. Thank you.
I I echo my fellow commissioners' comments. Again, thanking you for being here. It is this kind of participation that um engenders the change that um will be coming. And um just to sum up some of that, if it indeed and I do appreciate Joe's comments about how he has segregated the twenty-two acres. There's the six in ag, and then there's the sixteen that actually is what would be um uh the the uh opportunity to develop. Um and I think that's a that's a very um good distinction that we keep that um that we keep that distinction. Ultimately, if this property were to uh if it is if it is for sale or if someone was to um solicit and offer, ultimately, that buyer is going to be concerned with its highest and best use. And that that is ultimately what would happen with that. A potential buyer, that is the uh the utmost concern, is its highest and best use. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, since everyone else has spoken, again, I can't say it better than the rest of my colleagues, but I would like to ask just for the benefit of the public. Mr. Chairman, may I direct a question to Jennifer just to help answer? Great. Um so could you please, we know that there is going to be another public discussion on January thirtieth, but can you walk the audience through the process going forward?
So we still have probably at least another year in this process. So what is happening next is on January thirtieth is a community meeting, which is more for present presenting what I presented with more detail. The consultant has been working on uh this information, and so we'll have actual drawings on a map for you all to look at um as well as descriptions, draft descriptions for discussion and comment to respond to. Um and that's what the main um aspect of that meeting will be, taking those comments moving forward. And then next steps is going to be to start the environmental process. And what that means is that the consultant starts taking the information and looking at a lot all the things that are impacted. So we have a baseline of what our environment is now, and then we would be looking at what those changes, how does that impact everything, like you're talking about, from the utilities to traffic and etcetera, so moving that aspect. So that's one thing that's happening. The other aspect is more of what you and I will be working on is the actual documents. So the consultant will be drafting documents, and then we will be releasing those documents for review and comment and having meetings around those documents. Again, I'm not gonna release them all at once because that is a larger document. As I stated early, just that existing conditions was six hundred pages. The general plan will not be like that. I promise that, because nobody can actually be able to absorb that. But we do want them to be digestible. So um my goal is to group key elements that are really tied together so that we can focus and look at those, get responses, have meetings around them, and then move on to the next groupings. The process for actual adoption, so again, we'll have touch bases throughout, but the adoption process is once the E I R is, again, that's another process, but the E I R, we'll have a a process of preparation. We'll have a whole set of meetings just around the E I R itself, the environmental document, before we even get to the adoption of the general plan and the environmental document. I don't know if anybody's been following Santa Rosa, but just the environmental portion of it has taken, I think, over a year uh for them to get through. We're try, we will see what happens, but my goal is at the end of next year that we'll be in the process of going to Planning Commission for their recommendation. So Planning Commission's job is to make recommendations on what the general plan document is for city council's adoption. So city council is at the is at the end of that process. So they're the ones that would adopt a general plan. Does that get?
No, I think that's perfect. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, I'll just um wrap it up by saying that I'm gonna challenge you even further than the other members of this commission have. You're here tonight, many of you, not all of you, but many are of you here because of something happening in your neighborhood. And and I'm gonna challenge you, and not all of you will take me up on that. I'm gonna challenge you to make your neighborhood the entire city of Sonoma. Because that's what we have to do up here. And it isn't something that that is restricted to people who are up here. Uh it's something that any citizen can do, which is to decide your home is the city of Sonoma. Not the house you live in, not the street you live in, not your neighborhood, but the whole damn city is your home. And you can be as invested in the decisions through this general plan process about the city as a whole. You can be just as invested and thoughtful and concerned and involved in thinking about the future of the city as a whole as you are about what's happening on the Sebastiani property. That's what we have to do, and I'm challenging some of you, because let's face it, it's kind of a big and thankless job, but that's what I'm gonna challenge you to do. Because we're just you. But we've decided we'll take on the job of thinking about the whole of the city as our home and its future. So just as you think about what you need to do to protect your home and your family and and your landscaping and all the other things that are important to you, there's nothing about the city of Sonoma that can't can't fall into that framework. So that's my challenge. Sure, get involved in this, continue to be concerned about this property. But if you really want to get interested in what the planning process is, if you really want to get interested in what the future and the complexion and the nature of your town, your home is going to be, this is the opportunity. Because the plan that comes out of this process is going to be not just a blueprint. People sometimes talk about general plans as a blueprint for development. It's not. It's an actual land use constitution. It means, and what I mean by that is when there's a legal challenge that's raised about a land use issue, the guiding document that the court depends upon is the general plan. It's the constitution for development and land use in a community. That's how important it is. So you can get involved in it as little as you want to or as much as you want to. And and some of you may decide you want to get involved enough that you want to apply for a seat on a commission. There's going to be vacancies on this commission coming up. They're not filled by people outside of the town of Sonoma. These are filled by citizens.
Or one can be outside the city.
There are there are a couple from outside the city. Anyway, I will, at this point, uh thank you all so much for coming. It is it's kind of unusual to have such a full audience. Oh, Mr. Willers, you have one more comment?
Well, the comment is that you said it was a thankless job. Chair Barnett and myself have been involved in doing general plans for almost four decades in this community, and I don't find it to be a thankless job at all. In fact, all of you in this room proved to me that the work that we've done over over almost forty years was worth it. So thanks.
Okay, on that note, we're gonna take a five-minute recess. Thank you. Thank you.
One slide. Woo, all right, here you go. So these are the changes that...
It should be very short.
It's very short. These are the... We're just doing a few changes. If you looked at the document itself, you saw it was underlined and strike through in the proposed ordinance. So the changes are changing from the actual publication in our newspaper from two consecutive Fridays to just one Friday. Mailed notices will still be maintained at property owners within 500 feet. Just for reference, 300 feet is what's required by state law. We do do more than that. And then currently, we say that the tenants are only at the planning director discretion. Staff is recommending that we just do the tenants on the site and within 100 and within 100 feet of that site. And the reason for this is when we do tenants, it's all based on address. And if you saw the pile of postcards that Natalie gets back with every one of these mailings, we get basically half of them back again when we do any kind of tenant noticing. Unfortunately, for some reason, it's they're not working. They don't recognize those addresses for some reason. I'm not sure why. So this would help with that aspect of it, getting all this return mail of undeliverable, but also making sure that we're focusing on the tenants themselves. So let's say if there was something going on on a site for like maybe one unit, then all of those tenants, we still want to make sure they're getting notified and not rely on a property owner to notify. Posting, there was listed three locations, and this was combined with our posted notice. And what we were doing was posting the agenda at City Hall, taping it to the window over here, and then also the notice being posted on the site. And so those would be the three. Staff is recommending that we just clarify in the ordinance that we're going to post the agenda at City Hall with all the other agendas that are posted there. City council meetings no longer post here. They only post at City Hall, so this should just be consistent on where you can find the notice or of the agenda. And then the posted notices will still be onsite. To make sure that they're getting posted right now, we've just get an email back. We want to make it a little bit more formal and just create kind of an affidavit just saying that you are saying that you did this because it is a legal issue. And so we just want to make sure it's nice and clean and get that part of the record.
Jennifer, who posts onsite?
The applicant.
Okay.
Or Natalie, if they're not there. Noticing period is 10 days, and that'll stay 10 days. But when we were going through all the new laws, this one randomly came up, and AB 2904 was just adopted. It amends a completely different section than the section that talks about notices of public hearings, which is in government code sections 65090 through 65096. But this section, that AB 2904, is specific to zoning amendments, and so it's located in that section. So if you didn't know that this law happened and you're not reading the new zoning law, you wouldn't know that we have new requirements of 20 days' notice for all zoning amendments that affect land use of real property. So we want to make sure that that gets incorporated into our ordinance again, trying to make sure we have one place that staff and residents and property owners and applicants know where to go to find the answers. And so that is our recommendation, as well as to adopt the resolution recommending that city council adopt this ordinance and find the ordinance exempt.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
Why don't we just make it 20 days for everything and keep it simple?
So two different things. So this section of our code is specific to just our zoning code and land use. And if we went and changed 20 days, it would only be this. And so we would still have a 10-day notice, which is what the state law is, for everything else. So any other changes to the municipal code or any other requirements for noticing would still be at the 10 days. So we have another section of the code that manages the rest. And so it was just for consistency's sake to stick to the 10. I did think about doing 20 days for zoning and general plan, so like the big things. So typically, we don't see a lot of individual properties doing a zoning amendment or so affecting their own zoning or a general plan. We typically see it in kind of the bigger picture. And so we know that we are automatically going to have 1,000, more than 1,000 recipients of our mailer. So we know that we're going to do what's called an eighth-page posting in our local newspaper. So that's what is required. And so that would be the 20 days. I mean, it's something to consider. The only other thing that that affects is when a project will need to be deemed complete. So right now, we've been trying to be as nice as possible, but I still am wanting to make sure that people have a complete project at least 20 days before our hearing. So if I was noticing 20 days, then I'm looking for 30 days before. So sometimes we do this a little last minute.
And the 20-day notice is for amending zoning. So it's like if we decide to change zoning on a parcel, it's got a 20-day notice via the general plan part or if someone requests it. It's not any other zoning noticing. It's just that amending of zoning.
Correct. Yes, zoning code amendment that affects real property. So it'll be rare. We'll be doing it with this general plan process and the rezoning. We'll be doing it. So we... And it never hurts to do those at 20 days. It's just individual projects. We wouldn't want to do that.
And the trigger date on this whole process is the hearing date. So you're working backwards from the hearing.
I do work backwards. So yes, so 10 days is typically for us, we want to do it in a Friday paper, and the Tuesday before that Friday is the deadline. So then I want to make sure that Thursday before it's actually done. So that's where I get to the longer 20 days necessary for a project to be done. Does that make sense?
And then it ripples completely backwards to when we have to watch. Right? If we want to be on the agenda, if if an applicant wants to be on the on the agenda, you've got to work completely backwards from that and hope that you can get meet staff's timing and get the application in in order to do that. And that's typically, you know, you're talking about essentially two and a half to three months depending on when the date is of the hearing.
That you want.
That you want to try to get to.
Yes, and this is on the assumption that the hearing dates are regular, predictable, and calculable.
Exactly.
Okay.
So you're saying that changing this contributes to the efficiency of your department and on the part of the applicant as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Can I get a real call, please? I need a motion first.
I'll make the motion. I move to adopt a resolution recommending the adoption of an ordinance amending the municipal code section 19.88.020, notice of hearing, and finding that it's exempt from seque.
Second.
Commissioner Barbos?
Yes.
Commissioner Nugent?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Gorman Jenkins?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Willers?
Yes.
Commissioner Wyret?
Yes.
Chair Burnett?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And we'll just note in the minutes that there's no members of the public for public comment.
Thank you, Jennifer. All right, next item is 5.1, permit streamlining ad hoc recommendations. And who's going to do this presentation?
I would be happy to do it.
All right, let me say in advance of your presentation, I was mightily impressed.
Yes, indeed. Well, I'm glad.
So just tell me when you want me to scroll down.
Okay. So as we know, during our FY '23-'24 goal setting, we identified permit streamlining as one of those topics that was an immediate goal. We've come across several instances here. It's almost an inside joke how often these applications come before us where we realize, wow, this is, you know, fairly insignificant. Why did it even get to the level of requiring a hearing? And identified certain areas of the development code as areas that might need some attention to to help with efficiency. An ad hoc committee was formed that included Commissioner Nugent and myself, and we got together, kind of solicited input from various stakeholders, worked with Jennifer, and came up with what I think is a pretty decent plan moving forward that accomplishes our goal in that it the net that it casts is such that it reserves the authority of the planning commission to look at the things that we care the most about, but cedes some authority to to city staff for ministerial processes for the things that are maybe a little less significant and have a little less bearing on neighborhoods and proximate uses. The first part that we took a look at was design review and the design review standards that are reflected in 19.54.080. And if you'll recall, they're in those tables, table 5.2 and table 5.3. And like we've talked about before, the effect of of those tables is that they cast a pretty wide net. So we're looking at things through that design review lens that maybe don't necessarily need to be looked at through that lens. Such a wide net, in fact, that it was the opinion of our ad hoc that the public interest might might best be served by realigning that authority in certain circumstances. Where are we, Jennifer? Can you... Okay. So I broke this down into, we broke this down into three phases. And my phase one and the recommendations within phase one would be, I think I said a 12 points here that that really look at those tables and how best we might modify the tables to achieve our outcomes. I'll kind of go through these quickly here in the interest of time. So recommendation one in phase one is to eliminate the design review requirement altogether for any modifications to existing residential development, single-family and duplex, constructed over 45 years ago and determined not historic by historic resource evaluation. And then if you have my little document here in front of you, it kind of lists the justifications why I think these are, we think these are good ideas. Number two is to eliminate the design review requirement for new construction landscaping projects of any size outside the historic overlay district. The third was to eliminate the design review requirement for alterations to the rear of existing structures outside the historic overlay and not visible from the public ride away that have the effect of increasing the floor area by an amount greater than 10 and less than 25%. So if you'll recall, we've had some applications recently where I think that was a second-story bathroom addition that was just represented such a small expansion of square footage that it really didn't make much sense that it was coming before us, and it was not visible from the public rideaway. It was in the back of that, and I believe that was outside the historic overlay as The fourth point is to eliminate the design review requirement for any additions outside of the historic overlay of floor area equal to 10% or less and not visible from the public rideaway. The fifth is to reduce, if you'll recall, we have the major and the minor review authority. Major being ones that require review by the planning commission, and minor are those that are a ministerial decision. So my fifth point here is to reduce from major to minor review authority, applications for additions, excuse me, reduce from major to minor review authority, applications for additions to the rear of existing structures greater than 25% of existing floor area not visible from the public rideaway. And the sixth is to create a new standard, requiring major review authority for additions to existing structures that are visible from the public rideaway within the historic overlay or are determined historic with a historic resource evaluation. The seventh is to reduce from a major to minor review authority, design review requirement within historic overlay and historic resources for window modification, repair, replacement of windows, siding, roofs, and other materials in kind outside of the historic overlay. We've had several of these applications before us as well, and they always get that tacit nod from us. The eighth is to reduce from major to minor review authority, applications for alterations to approved landscaping plans greater than 2,500 square feet in existing multifamily development constructed less than 25 years ago. Oh, excuse me, 45 years ago. The ninth is to increase the threshold from 400 square feet, what it is now, to 800 square feet to trigger major design review authority in commercial and mixed-use development. And the final and 10th recommendation in phase one is to reduce from major to minor review authority, applications for landscaping for commercial and mixed-use development. And in my estimation, those are recommendations that if they were, if that are amenable to our commission could be recommended for adoption to the city council tonight or soon. And that would have the effect of shrinking that that net that I was talking about to, you know, increase efficiency on behalf of the planning department, increase, decrease the amount of kind of, you know, inconsequential hearings that we have and to speed things up for applicants. Anybody have any comments or questions on those 10 points? Yes, sir?
I go down the list here. I generally agree with all of this, but when it comes down to the specifics of it, I'm going to go to item four first and bring that, I would bring that in line, I would suggest that rather than 10%, you just think of, think of the kind of average house in Sonoma, you know, 1,900, 2,000 maybe, you know, 10% of that's 200 square feet. That's, you know, small bedroom, maybe, not not even. And and so along with number five, I would, I would suggest taking that to less than 25% because in the following line, then we go from major to minor, in other words, reducing the review level when it exceeds 25%. So you get, you get review over 25%, but below 25%, you're kind of clear.
So are you suggesting eliminating design review for less than 25%?
I am.
As opposed...
Because it's, it's also conditioned by the fact that it's not visible from the public rideaway.
Yes.
In other words, it's at the rear of the property.
So we...
All the other constraints.
You essentially combining item four and item five, essentially eliminating four and subordinating it to five.
Right. When you're, when you're over 25, you then you go, you have a minor review.
That makes sense to me. Yeah. And we've accomplished the same thing.
You know, it's inconsequential for the most part. The larger, the larger buildings are going to be on larger lots, they're going to have typically lower FARs. It, you know, it's going to be, the FARs and the, and the setbacks setbacks are going to control more than the percentage.
Right.
In most cases. And so, so that's just a recommendation there.
Okay.
The, in number seven, the caveat is always, and and I know Jennifer will chuckle, is is the definition of in kind.
Right.
Because if someone had in kind, if someone had the opportunity 50 years ago to put windows in that we have the opportunity to put windows in today, they probably would put the windows in that we put in today and not the ones they put in 50 years ago. And so, so the in kind part is really problematic unless we define it as generic, in other words, casement, double-hung, or dimensional frame, frame size equivalent. Materials are even difficult because all wood windows that honestly don't get used anymore because no one likes maintaining them. And so they just don't get used. And 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 then steel sash windows, which a lot of our older homes or some of our older homes here have, are, you know, archaic from, from an environmental and from a livability standpoint. And if they're not in a truly historic building, then the penalty of having to have an in kind steel sash window, if you do it with double glazing, is like five times the cost of a wood, a good energy-efficient wood window with aluminum cladding. So that caveat is a difficult one. I'm, I'm all for it, for the, the idea behind it, but the, the definition just has to be not the rub point. It, and, you know, so I think we need to do some work to work that out. I'll put it that way. You know, there is another threshold. The threshold is if it's in the historic overlay district and it has been determined to be a historic building, there's a, there's another threshold for the determination of how much of the character of that historic building are those windows. But, but just because it's in the overlay and it's more than 45 years old, you know, some of those, some of the buildings that are, that are the kind of mid-century buildings have, you know, single glass carpenter-made fixed windows on the site with stops in them. So is that what we're supposed to replace? Is that how, when we want to make that building more energy efficient? So anyway, that's just a caveat that we need to take care of. And then, and the same holds true for number nine, and that is increase the threshold from 400 or 800 to 400. But to me, it's more a percentage that is the impact than, you know, you can have a 10,000-square-foot mixed-use building, and 800 square feet is a mechanical room.
Right.
But, but a 25% addition to it or a 10% addition to that square footage is more calibrated to the scale of the building than 800 square feet. You know, 1,000-square-foot mixed-use building or commercial building that has an 800-square-foot addition in some cases might be more impactful than a 10,000-square-foot having 10% added to it.
Right.
So, so that's just a, that's just my take on, on those first group of things.
Would you ascribe a percentage off the top of your head that would...
Well, I, you know...
...satisfy what we're trying to accomplish in that point?
It's, it's what we're, you know, what is it that we're trying to protect against before triggering major design review? So.
I mean, I think what we're trying to protect against would be some, you know, offensive, obtrusive, yeah, something uncharacteristic of, unbefitting of the, the neighborhood and its surroundings, I guess.
Well, the, most of the commercial zone properties and most of the mixed-use zone properties are along commercial corridors already.
Right.
Some of the mixed-use properties that are along Broadway are residential in character because they were built as residences.
Right.
And so, so those are going to be different in terms of their context. Commercial properties along West Napa Street that want to add 800 square feet are, you know, who's going to be impacted? The parking lot, probably, because of the way that those properties were developed. So it's, it's difficult, and, and the square footage thresholds are, are, you know, I know we're trying to kind of put the, make, make a threshold that when you go over it, you, you got to go to, to major design review. But major design review is, you know, it's a relatively significant impact on a project from a timing standpoint and from a relative, it's not relatively expensive in the, in the big picture, but the time is...
But time is expensive.
And the preparation of the documentation is expensive. And so, you know, trying to meter those things.
So would you...
So 10, 15, you know, percent? Because we don't have big buildings. We're fortunate. We don't really have large buildings.
Can I just...
Yes, please.
So like residential, so we have historic overlay that encompasses commercial as well. And majority of our historic districts are commercial. And so what about treating them similar to what we do for residential in that sense of in the historic overlay or historic gets that major design review because that was kind of where I feel like design review, maybe that's where design review started, was more in trying to preserve our historic character. And so maybe that's where we want to focus, the major design review to maintain that character. And then some of the West Napa commercial corridor, it's more, you know, if it's a big new project, maybe we are more, that could be impactful. That's when we're going to see it anyway, so we might as well attach some design review to a use permit. It doesn't hurt because we're now consolidating everything, right?
Oh, now we're getting into the, you know...
I know that was my next one, but they're all tied.
Okay. So we'll make a note, I guess, on nine to kind of revisit that and try to tie that back into historic or historic overlay.
Okay, is that Mr. Willers?
That was good review.
Okay, I, I have a question about number seven, which you raised.
Yes, sir.
The term in kind. Would, would referring to or adding to the phrase visually in kind solve the problem?
I think that complicates it.
Well, I mean, let's face it, what Bill's, what Bill is describing is the change in the technology of windows over the last 50 years. And so, you know, you're not going to get a double-hung wooden sash window, that's a single-pane window, and, and put a single-pane window in, you're going to put in a double-pane wooden sash window or something that visually appears to be it. Now, you can get into some nuance on it. I've seen some windows in, in buildings where it's a mock multi-pane window, where they use metal strips, which to me is like really cheesy.
It's worse.
Yeah, it's worse. So I, I don't know how you play with the, with the actual subtle nuances of this without, without insisting on a duplication of the existing design and its manufacture. That's, that's, you know, problematic. So I think, I mean, the intent here, and maybe the helpful thing to do is go back to the intent. The intent is that in a historic structure, that, that as much as possible, the look of the building is retained. How do you, how do you, how do you do that in concert with the change in manufacturing and durability and everything else?
Dual-pane windows are dual-pane windows. They have two pieces of glass and they have a divider. And you can, even if it's a truly divided light, in other words, the mutton that divides the piece of glass goes through the window section, which then again defeats its energy efficiency. But... But, anyway, if it's truly divided into each individual small pane, you can do that. And you can do that at a price that's a, at least fifty percent plus markup on the window that would be not truly divided, but would be a pane of glass with a strip around it, and a grid on the inside and a grid on the outside to mimic the division of light. What I'm more concerned about is, um, those buildings that are more than forty-five years old, that are not historic structures, that just happen to be old and want to replace their windows to make their house more energy efficient. And the term in-kind means that they have to use something that's very similar to what's currently there, which ultimately ends up being very expensive for not a significant building.
But why, why would a building that is deemed not historically significant have to do that at all?
Because right now it does.
Right now it does, but I think that's the question. So number seven, when you read it, it says reduce from major to minor review authority, design review requirement within the historic overlay. So our historic overlay, as you know, incorporates buildings from all ages. And so, you could do a reduce from, um, you know, eliminate design review for nonhistoric for just this item, right, the replacement of existing materials. The thing that comes about and, and something in another jurisdiction was if design review approved a look. We don't do paint here, except on commercial, by the way, as far as a trigger. But let's say they, design review approved a look. In another jurisdiction I've worked, any modification to what design review approved automatically triggers that design review should look at it again to modify what that looks like. And so that's a question with this historic overlay. A lot of these buildings probably had design review and had a cohesive design. And so what is in-kind replacement for those? Do you, does it matter anymore at this point for, you know? Or not, anything in your historic overlay I'm talking about. Anything in the historic overlay. We've taken out anything that's not historic outside of the historic overlay. So we're really focusing in on the historic overlay. And how do you want to treat modifications to the homes that are there that are not historic? So we're not talking about the late eighteen hundreds, you know, home. We're talking about, you know, maybe the nineteen seventy-five, um, or the nineteen eighty-five. I don't know. And so, or even your house, let's say, if you were in the history, no, you're just outside. Yeah, if you were, you know, and you-
I have a few more years.
Yeah, a few more years, but, but I'm just saying, if we wanted to change his windows, and you had gone through design review for your home, and now you're changing your windows, does that matter?
Well, but it seems to me we've created the conundrum by establishing the historic overlay zone. And, and I understand why we've done it, but, but that's what's generating the difficulty, which is that any, any house that's, um, within the historic overlay z- zone is subject to a higher level of scrutiny than another house. And, you're, you're shaking your head. Put your mic on.
But the first trigger is it's older than forty-five years old.
That's correct, so.
Which there are a lot of buildings, you know, that's nineteen seventy-nine.
Exactly, so-
Clicking every year.
Exactly. So the fact that we have historic overlay zone is trigger one. And then trigger two is how old is the house? And is it, and we've already had to accept that there needs to be an HRE on any house that's forty-five years old. And what we're now attempting to accomplish is eliminating the design review if, if from that process, if it's determined that it's not historic.
Right.
And so, to me, the, the issue is, is, you know, we've got these multiple layers of conditions that now apply to a given property that to a certain extent are triggering things that are inappropriate to the property. I mean, that's, that's the heart of it. I mean, a nineteen seventy-five house is not a-
Well, that's where, that's where the city of St. Helena did, I think, a, a really good thing. They didn't just throw a blanket over an area of town that contained a lot of historic buildings. They actually threw the blanket on the historic properties.
Right.
And, and left the other ones out of it.
And that's what I'm getting at. I mean, it's, maybe we've outlived the value of the, of the historic zone designation.
Yeah, agreed. It casts too, the historic overlay in Sonoma casts too wide a net. And, uh, I mean, I, I would be amenable to just deleting design review altogether, outside, outside of the historic overlay and not, and, and, you know, obviously not historic resources for replacement of windows. No, 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 no. No. Replacement of windows-
We don't need a design review commission then.
So, um, yeah, well, there just went my commission. Okay. No, I'm just kidding. So one of the things, just to, to, to build off of what we were just talking about with the historic overlay and bringing that into consideration. I consider those baby steps right now. This is our first pass. We want to start, right, see how it works, see what the community, does it come out of, you know, the woodwork? And say, wait, hold up, what happened? Which is probably why this happened in the first place, right? Something happened. That's what I always, when codes get-
It was the advent of vinyl windows.
Probably.
No, they was.
That's what, that's what happened to me in the two thousands.
That's what, that's where this came from.
So I wrote a policy on in-kind window replacement.
Older homes were being replaced with vinyl windows.
In two thousand and five, I was dealing with that, yeah. Okay. Um, so historic overlay, in the, in his, historic preservation terms, we consider those conservation districts was a kind of a boundary because it was, there was not a historic district. And so it was a way in which to control the streetscape and create design environment around those spaces. One of the jurisdictions I worked is more like what you're talking about. It was only the house and the houses right around it was the only ones in one of those. This one is, I think, only literally that house or groups of houses or districts that was actually identified. So to get there, you need to have a survey. And so that's on my list to do next year, so that we don't have to have every property do a historic resource evaluation and that we have a survey and plan on updating it every five years. Because that's what the forty-five is, is because it's a fifty-year mark, right? So we, we say forty-five years, what's going on? If any, none of those properties are identified from that forty-five to fifty, then they're kind of out. It's going to be the forty to forty-five or the next group that we'll look at, so. And then modifications happen to the ones that we've, are historic, and we need to remove them if they're not historic anymore. They've been modified to the point where they're just, they're not there.
Right.
So that's, that's the goal. So that would be what I would call part of that, this phase one, this phase two.
Right. Yeah, the goal was to, you know, bearing in mind that it'll take time to create that survey, to create a stopgap by some immediate code changes that kind of affect what the change we want to see now. And with, you know, some input, I think we can get there.
And so, is that, so is the survey the city?
That would be my goal. I'm gonna apply for, since we're certified local government, we need to apply for those grants. So, that would be, um, Natalie's going to help me write our first CLG report and turn that in so we're eligible for our grant. And so that's the goal.
And I'm going to bring this back to the idea of affordable housing, or housing affordability in our community, you know. A post-war house on the west side on, I'll use, try not to be- No, I'll use Joaquin. It, it goes through, so it's not isolating someone. On Joaquin, um, in order to do an addition to its house or change its windows, spends three thousand dollars to get an HRE. And, and then you get to go to the design review committee.
I think that's what he's trying to address, and, and, and I, and I, I think, you know, this has been a great start. So, at this point, unless there are other comments, what I'd suggest is that you put in one more round of consultation with Jennifer and maybe Bill, and, and look at language or terms that may, um, uh, that may work better than things like in-kind and so forth, and see if we can get into a tighter definition. And, and then bring it back one more time and we'll take it from there. Does that sound reasonable?
How's our agenda looking for the next meeting? Could we come back that quick?
I need to look at it. Um, can I make a friendly change to that suggestion?
Sure.
And that we actually come back with a draft of what that table looks like and with the information, and then that way you can respond in kind of that format that we would want to put onto our document, into the code.
Yeah, I would support that.
Sure, that's fine.
So maybe February.
Okay.
So I have a lot of other comments on the table, though. Sorry. I'll go through them as quickly as I can. So, let's see. Just go through the, the table. So, uh, first page-
Are we, we're talking about the-
Five point two.
Okay.
So, let's see, second, uh, titled. So we're in page one of ten when we get to the design review, when we get to the tables in the current ordinance for design review. Since it's going to affect, though I think there are elements in here that we aren't affecting in the, um, suggestions. I think that there are a lot of, um, a lot of elements or a lot of uses here that are triggered as major, that are outside of the overlay district, that could become either minor or no. And I'll, the first example is, single-family development, two to five units with associated-
What page are you on?
I'm on page two of ten of-
Under new residential development?
Under design review.
I, I have it up on the screen.
Yeah, there we go.
So he's talking about-
Where it says, "Single-family development,"
Yeah.
"two to five units," and associated, um, when it's outside of the overlay district for a single-family home, there is no design review required. If it's within, it's major. If you go down to multifamily dwellings and associated accessory structures, soon, we've just said that we have, um, the opportunity in any single-family parcel to have duplexes, triplexes, or we're working in that direction, fourplexes. I think it should have actually the same value outside of the overlay district. In other words, it's not in the historic district, it's not in the historic neighborhood. In order to incentivize those multiple units and make them have some affordability, that they don't go through a design review process. They have to comply with the FAR, the setbacks and the height restrictions. And they're in a neighborhood that's not a historic neighborhood, that hasn't been identified as a historic neighborhood. I don't think they should require a major design review. Because they're, you know, those are going to be, if it's a large project, a large multifamily project, five units or more, it's going to come in front of the planning commission. If it's a multifamily project, in other words, four units or smaller on a single-family lot, because we're moving in that direction, I don't think it should be, um-
But are you indicating that if it comes before the, are you indicating that if it comes before the planning commission, because it's a larger project, that the planning commission will essentially be doing the design review?
We've been doing that on large projects.
Yeah, so I mean-
We have to do five, or held the five meetings.
Right.
So, just remember that design review is another entitlement aspect that has its own set of findings outside of what a use permit. And then if we didn't require a use permit for the multifamily, it wouldn't come before you at all. Or design review commission. And so that's what I just want to clarify, is that multifamily dwellings and associated accessory structures, if we removed the need for design review, it could be completely by right.
Well, then, then maybe the caveat should be large, in other words, our definition between small and large projects is that trigger point of five units. So if it's a fourplex on a single-family lot, which we're looking to entitle by right, then we shouldn't have to go through major design review if we're not, this is what I'm saying, if we're not within the historic overlay district. It should kind of be treated the same as a single-family dwelling is in that zone, because it's on the same kind of property. And we're trying to encourage that. So, um, so anyway, that's, that's the first one. On the following page, on page three. Major would go to no in that case, or at least minor. You know, or at most minor, I guess I should say.
And that's only outside of the overlay district at this point.
Because it encourages it.
And that's only, but that's only outside of the historic district.
No, definitely, yeah. And the same thing holds true for the, let's see, on, on, um, section three, existing residential development constructed over forty-five years. Alterations to the rear, existing structures not visible from the public right of way, blah, blah, blah. If it's outside of the overlay district, I think that should be, just should be allowed to happen. Because a single fam- a- again, a single-family home in that district on a bare piece of land can be built without design review. So why can't someone add on to their house without design review?
I think what, um, it narrowed down to in the recommendation from the ad hoc was that the only, um, structures that would be getting design review outside of the overlay would be specifically the larger developments would still, like you were saying, and, um, historic resources themselves was kind of what I was reading through.
Okay.
Is that-
Yes.
Kind of what, okay.
So we're not talking about individual, nonhistoric properties here?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Could they go from major to minor?
They could if, but that goes in line, that goes a kind of where we're going with that recommendation previously was more in line with what you were saying, where new structures don't require a design review, yet modifications to them would. So I, I think that's why the recommendation started with just eliminate anything that wasn't historic. If we don't require any design review to begin with, then why in the future?
So, I, I think Jennifer gets the gist of it.
Yes.
I'm, my concern is, and we'll, we'll get it back as a document.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
We can talk.
Thanks for the work.
Sure. Let me just real quick buzz through this other part, if you'll indulge me. What I had down here is phase two. So, uh, kind of in our research, uh, there are other jurisdictions, St. Helena's one of them, that use a, um, instead of having a sole issuing authority for a use permit, like we have in Sonoma, which is the planning commission, there's a bifurcated, if you will, issuance authority for use permits. St. Helena, for example, has a, a MUP or a minor use permit and a CUP, a conditional use permit. The minor use permit is approved ministerially with a set of conditions that have to be met. And, um, the CUP is, um, a conditional use permit that is granted by the, uh, planning commission that, you know, is maybe a, a more consequential in scope and arguably has more impact to the surrounding neighborhood and is deserving of some higher level of scrutiny with some, you know, uh, public hearing. The purpose of a minor would be to provide an administrative review process for proposed uses and activities of limited govern- or limited environmental impact to sure, to ensure that they're compatible with locational, structural traffic and, uh, neighborhood character, uh, components. And, uh, like I said, the conditional use permit, um, the purpose would be to allow proper integration into the city. into the city. And that's an authority reserved to the planning commission. And what I would suggest is that we kind of think about which uses in our existing use table are those which we would want to, i- if we were to adopt this bifurcated process, which uses should be reserved for planning commission review and which should be ceded to the authority of planning staff for ministerial approvals. And then what I had is phase three was getting into kind of what we've already touched on was our historic overlay. And we have those maps there that I attached in the back. That Sonoma just looks kind of like a big wet blanket that's thrown over the city, where other jurisdictions in our region get a lot more surgical. And, you know, since that overlay is used as a test prong in other areas of our development code, as we've seen, I think recommending to the, to the council that we undertake that survey or do that, that big historic resource inventory would be beneficial.
If we wait long enough, this will become an AI capability.
Right.
And we won't have to do anything.
And if there are no comments or questions, I'm done with that. Therese, do you have anything to add?
Nope, got it.
I like the bifurcated, minor use, conditional use. Put your microphone on.
I like the bifurcated MUP.
MUP and CUP.
MUP and CUP.
MUP and CUP.
MUP and JUP.
You gotta get your MUP.
I don't know.
I like MUP and CUP. That is my proposal.
Okay, thank you, Matt. And, and once again, both of you, you did a great job. So thank you so much. All right, our last item before we get to.
Can I ask one question of Jennifer first?
Depends on what it is.
I'm wondering if there's any value in the Sonoma League for Historic Preservation survey that they have of historic homes and whether or not that could be a starting point for your survey.
So that was the starting point of our actual historic resource inventory that was done in the seventies. And it has not been updated. They worked on the Sonoma Valley one more recently and they got a grant for that. Their focus right now is helping us with the cemetery. I don't know if you saw what all they're doing up there, which is really great.
That's a historic league versus a, there's two.
There's two.
Yeah.
But one of them's more involved in the actual documentation and research than the other two. One's more about, a lot more of the engagement with the community and providing, I feel like, more lectures and things, which are great. But incorporating their participation will help bring the cost down, for sure. But yeah, we're, we're utilizing an old base, except for, we did look at some of the resources more recently. We did, Paige and Turnbull came, I want to say three years ago now, and looked at our historic district and a couple other areas, created a couple more historic districts and added some more resources to our list at that time. But we have never had what's called a comprehensive citywide survey nor historic context, where it actually identifies different periods of our development history and the people that are important to that timeframe, the types of homes that are important. And that kind of helps us moving forward with these historians too, of saying it's historic or not historic. And it also gives us a more compact history.
More context.
Yeah. The other, only other thing that would add to the streamlining is you brought up when you were talking about a project that we just had, where you were talking about the bathroom. The reason why that came before you was actually because it was an exception. It wasn't, so design review always goes to design review if there's no other entitlements required. We call to you for exceptions, variances, use permits. And so there are certain types of exceptions probably that you would look like that one. And we had one other one this year where it was literally under the roof line. And so, you know, those types or extensions of existing walls, things like that, potentially.
Yeah, I would, I would be a champion of maybe the ad hoc reconvening and looking at other, a couple other options like a major and minor exception process or a major and minor variance, along the same lines as this, what we were talking about with the CUP and MUP.
It's okay, it's a MUP-CUP. I'm, I'm game.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to the last item, five point three, discussion on the housing element implementation programs.
Okay, I am not gonna go through all 17 pages of this. It is long, there's a lot to do. This is only the summary of what the actual details are of what we need to do. They are divided into different programs and within each program there are specific implementation measures and they also gave us years to do them. We're behind, not gonna lie, HCD, sorry. And we're, we report this every year in our annual progress report, so it's not like it's a secret. So next year is really, Diane is going to be focusing on housing.
Oh, thank, I didn't, I just found out.
You did not. Jacob's gonna be focusing on transportation and climate action, so, you know, I'm dividing up all the love. But the, we're really gonna focus and button down on all the things that we need to do through 2025. And those will be a big component of staff's work plan next year. So I just wanted to give you that heads up. The implementation measures range from zoning amendments that need to occur to actually holding public meetings around fair housing for tenants as well as for landlords and just a lot of different types of activities. So you'll see more community gatherings around these different topics. I'm gonna try to put together a day just on housing and housing resource fair at the library, so doing these different types of activities that are identified in our housing element. So if you're like, why are they focusing on that? Because it's in there. So I just wanted to let you all know and so you all now have access to our list to do and what years they were supposed to be done.
Okay, thank you. I've just got one observation and I did read through the whole document. And as a general statement, I think the likelihood of our reaching the arena number required of us for affordable housing is dubious. We're just not, we're just not doing it quickly enough. And larger projects, and we've got 311 units, are not being built. And the largest one we have coming down the block is the De Nova apartment project on Highway 12, and that's about it. My concern is that, is that we're not attracting those kind of developments. And I believe that part of the reason we're not attracting them because the Affordable Housing Trust Fund has not been funded adequately to be able to provide the incentives, which could include the city using that fund to purchase a piece of land that could contribute to a project or actual financial assistance to a project. I don't think, I don't think we're gonna make it at the current pace we're going. So, and I didn't see any references, and I may have missed it, I didn't even see one reference in this document to the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So I think we need to find a spot to wedge that in and, and make it, connect it to the implementation measures and, and raise its, raise its visibility. Because at this point, it's the only thing we have to provide incentives. But it was an interesting document to read and I would suggest you all go through it. It didn't take that long. Anybody have any comments on the document? We can talk about it again.
No comments, just one question.
Yeah.
Are there any repercussions associated with not meeting, I'm sorry, I just had to ask, not meeting the timelines. I just know that, that housing element approval and adherence has become such a huge topic of discussion in Sacramento. I hear it daily. So are there any concerns that we should be contemplating by not meeting some of the target dates?
So HCD, when they approved the housing element specifically identified six programs, do you remember in the letter?
Yes.
So something like six programs specifically in, and we identified them on this sheet here. And just so that you're aware too, is we are tracking what they're following, because they specifically said, "These are the ones that we really care about and we will be watching." And so those are the ones that we're really gonna focus on. You know, it's not that we haven't done anything and so we've done things and it's just a matter of making sure that we're telling our story in that annual progress report. And it's not necessarily HCD, it's others that report to HCD. So it's just telling our story, where we're at, why we're there. You know, the reason why the housing element came up is because I got a letter. And so when I got the letter, it was, it was kind of, you know, the bow, the cannonball going over the bow of the ship, just giving you a heads up, we're here. And so that's kind of triggered the, oh geez, and just really focusing in on those. So.
Well, and I just want to commend you and staff for all the work that's being done. And I did, I did read all 17 pages and it was very illuminating, but, and I didn't, I, I just was curious because of all the conversation around housing element that I listened to in Sacramento, but appreciate the update and thank you for all your work.
Yeah, so we will continue to work on it and try to make as much progress as we can. And as you know, last year it was kind of a one-man shot for a number of months, so it's just not, it was just not feasible. So, and then also the way that certain things were written, specifically like the zoning amendment. It's not really a zoning amendment, it's, it's a land use change, so probably need to change by the general plan as well. So it's not this quick, easy, three-month thing that was identified for the due date. And so that was the explanation behind why it hadn't been done yet, but we're working on it.
Anything else? All right, let's move on to comments and announcements, Jennifer, yours?
So I do want to let you all know that Isabel, Isabel, Isabel Peterson is our new youth member, was identified last night at the city council meeting. Also that Patricia Forar-Rivas is our new mayor and Ron Wallander is our new vice mayor for the first year. I do not remember the entire thing, but it's the year of climate, people, environment, and I can't remember economics, I want to say, as the, the topic. With that, the general plan goal, or not the general plan, sorry, just read my thing, notes. The goal session will start on 1/30, on January 30th, in the morning, I can't remember the exact time, but it's gonna be at the lodge. And if you want to hang out with me all day, that night is when the general plan goals, or not goals, but land use will be discussed. So you could really spend all day with me if you really wanted to.
You put none in my calendar?
You could, thanks. And so both of those are happening on January 30th, it's gonna be a busy day. City council meeting is on January 15th. I will be bringing the active transportation plan that was brought to you all. There were comments provided, we've responded to those comments. So there should be, hopefully, my goal is to, I'm working with SETA and the consultant to get us the final document. They're work, they obviously have to work with all the cities. And we're pretty much the first meeting. So I'm trying to get the document as soon as possible, get it on our website so that other people can see it. And it will include the comments and the response to comments, so people can see that they were heard. And, and then our meeting is on January 16th. So I will look at seeing what all is on the list and I will talk to you and Zedra about Ginnicker on, if that is what is desired.
Okay, thank you. As to commissioner comments, I just want to start by recognizing Commissioner Barbos. I believe this is his last meeting as a commissioner. Steve's history with the city goes way back. He's been on the planning commission before. I think I appointed him to the planning commission. That's how old we've gotten. And, and then went on to be on the city council and was the mayor and, and has been one of those people who has continued to be involved and care about the city and volunteer his time. And it's a fairly precious commodity, if I may refer to him that way, and, and deeply appreciated. And, and so I consider Steve a friend and a colleague and I just want to take this moment to thank him for his service and his time. And, and I'm hoping that he will continue to poke his head up on the issues that are important to him. He's got a lot of knowledge and, and care. So, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Would you like to?
I would like to say a few things. I think this is a, a great planning commission, great group of people. We've done a lot of good work together and I have every confidence that that good work will continue, notwithstanding my absence. Hopefully, there'll be another person appointed who can enthusiastically embrace where you've pointed things. I really, tonight's meeting was pretty, a good last meeting, I must say, with the, what we saw from the audience. And I think I loved what has come up on, just in terms of improving how the city functions and making it a lot more user-friendly, both for staff and for commissioners and citizens who want to change their windows without having an historic resource evaluation on their house. So I'll miss you all and keep up the good work and you may find me out there, stepping up to the podium now and then.
All right. Thank you. Other comments?
Yeah, I'll go. I hate to see you leave, Steve, but I have to say I've enjoyed the years that I've been able to sit up here with you and learn from you and glean from your voluminous contributions to the city. And, you know, you're always, the words of, of wisdom, you're always the adult in the room. And you're, you have this ability to just come into conversations and, and insert logic and common sense. And it's always helped me to inform the way that I look at things and, and feel about things. And, you know, you've almost been as good a commissioner as you are a neighbor, so. And, um, you know, you've almost been as good a commissioner as you are a neighbor, so. So-- Uh, we're probably doing different things, though.
You're changing diapers.
Not anymore, thank goodness.
Well, that's okay, because I may soon be changing diapers.
Oh, my gosh. Anyway, Steve, uh, thank you very much. And, um, I know you're not going anywhere, I don't think, at least here. I know where to find you.
Anyone else with, uh--
I have to echo that. Steve, I met Steve first, I don't know if you remember this, when I was calling looking for an attorney. And, because I got a cease and desist letter from some ruthless developer, and I was looking for some help, and somebody told me to call Steve Barbos. And you're like, I don't get in that, but you gave me the name of somebody else. And, and then I ended up sitting on the planning commission with you, and luckily, that ruthless developer isn't in town anymore. But it's been such a pleasure, and I have to echo the same comments that Matt said. You're always such a wise counsel. And I will try and remember that as we go forward without your perspective, because I think it's an important perspective that we don't want to lose. And I still have your cell phone number.
Um, I, I echo all of the above, um, and just, um, you will be missed. I've appreciated your ability to, um, uh, just drill, you just, you, after it's all been discussed, you just go right down to the brass tacks and summarize it, and this is, and it's, um, yeah. And it's like, that's right, that's exactly what we should be talking about. So I appreciate that. And, um, uh, as an aside, just from a personal standpoint, um, uh, he represented, my husband and I, in, in something that, um, turned out to be successful, and we're very appreciative and have never forgotten that, so, thank you.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, I'm not losing a commissioner, I'm losing my ride to the meetings. So--
I'll pick you up, Larry. If you can handle my monster truck, Larry.
So--
I've been accused of having a monster truck before. Yeah.
And, and Steve, just remember, it's a lot more fun on that side than it is here.
All right, well, I think that's it. We covered a lot of territory tonight, thank you very much. And can I hear a motion to adjourn?
I, I'll make a motion, but first I'd like to say, this year has been great. I, I have thoroughly enjoyed serving with all of you on the planning commission this year. We, we are, I, we are a good group. And, and let's hold it together and make a lot of progress next year. Um, thanks.
Okay, is there someone who wants to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, so adjourned.